Right at six o'clock. The May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five meeting of the Dexter Township Planning Commission will now please come to order. By way of introduction and checking for quorum, I will introduce the members of Planning Commission. I am Marty Straub. Commissioner Christie Mayor, who would occupy the seat down there, called in with an excused absence. Sean Smith, Steve Birch, Chandra Heard, Dan Berry, and Alicia Abbott. Do we have a quorum? If you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Conflict of interest review. Any member of Planning Commission have a conflict of interest with any of our items of business tonight? Seeing none, approval of the agenda. Anybody want to add, subtract, reorder our agenda? Seeing none, the agenda will stand approved as presented. Brings us to public comment. Anyone who cares to address the Planning Commission at this point in the meeting, please step up to the microphone. I think need to be turned on, Janice. If you could, yeah, there you go. And then if you would please state your name and address for the record. And be somewhat succinct in your comments. Any takers?
Good evening, everyone. I am Adam Havakiss. My address is one three nine five three Gilbert Drive. And I want to stand up and speak in support of a delay to any decisions on the short term rental policy decisions. I really appreciate what the the ad hoc committee did to put that together, but based on time, cost rates and data. I think their their recommendations may be flawed, and I think you really need to take a slow look at this because I think it creates some risk and liabilities for the township. A few of my observations, I did attend several of the meetings. I watched the process. I engaged once. And just what I really want to share with the group was that, first of all, land, land uses and rights and responsibilities being taken from landowners, I fundamentally don't support. So you kind of know where I am. And that could shape some of my opinion on some of these things I'm going to share with you. But the bottom line is, I think, gets an infringement encroaching on landowners' rights. The survey that was used as a critical portion, or it appeared to be a critical portion of the study, was flawed. It didn't have it. The sample set was too small. It wasn't very scientific. And frankly, it wasn't well collected. Relied on automation, some some notification, but frankly, with less than three hundred results in, it's not giving us a decent sample set. The summary of the results I presented to you, I think, lack any critical thinking. I think they they were unable to. There were comments throughout the the results coming to you that led me to believe that there was an opinion that was being rendered by the author. And I I just bring that caution to you. Several of the recommendations exceed recommendations or standards in our commercial zoning requirements, both the state, local, and federal requirements, or state and national requirements. So it's further restricted than even some commercial zoning requirements. There was a recommendation or an observation that law enforcement is unsuited to enforce the ordinances that are currently in place. I found that interesting because if we can't enforce many of the ordinances that there is a concern for, we can enforce those which already state and address many of the concerns. How are we going to do it with more policy? So perhaps we enforce the zoning ordinances that are in place. We we put some energy into policing to support that. I do. I do appreciate the the work of the group. You know, a lot of volunteers get a lot of their time to do what they needed to do. But that board really didn't reflect the demographics of our community. I think it was a, I understand the composite of it. I understand how it was selected, but it isn't really reflective of of our community. And then my last point here is just that. I think you all pause just a moment, reflect on what's being presented to you. Maybe we've read, maybe you should readdress some of the concerns, a better analysis of the data. More education, more community forums, more input, so that a final decision, if a decision is chosen to be made, that it is informed, educated, and representative of the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Joseph Spiegel, seventy nine oh five Sower. Trustee Abbott and trustee Heard have already heard some of what I'm about to say. Excuse us. Repeating myself. The proposed short term rental ordinance needs to balance property rights of an individual, the cost to the township, the impact on the environment, whether or not the enforcement of the current ordinance will cost less and be more effective than the implementation of a new ordinance, which will undoubtedly require defense to lawsuits that will come as a result of the implementation of this proposed ordinance. To weigh those is very difficult for the trustees. It has been very difficult for the outstanding work of the committee. I have not seen or read all the submissions to the trustees. When I do, I may have some more comments. Property rights versus the rights of all the citizens of Dexter Township is a difficult balancing act. I know you will take it seriously, and I look forward to seeing the results of what has been currently submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Step right up.
Yes, Jim Drolet, nine nine three three Algonquin Drive. I too would like to compliment the committee on the report that they did. I think it was very thorough. I think they balanced out the pros and the cons. But I have to remind this body, and later on, probably the township board. Zoning, the township has no responsibility to any property owner to make their property more profitable. Be commercial or residential, that's not the job of the township whatsoever. Master plan in this instance clearly spells out the types of residence, atmosphere that people would like to have in this township. And this is not one of them. When we talk about the property rights for people, we have to say, okay, the property rights for twelve people who want to have a rental versus the property rights of the other seven hundred residents that don't want it and are impacted by that particular rental business. You know, I think that we've gotten along this long in Dexter Township without this. Now, I understand there have been some properties who have been used in that fashion. But apparently, they have flown under the radar because they haven't caused any problems. And most of the time, they haven't caused problems because they've had people who knew people who wanted to rent their house. But you add a whole new spectrum to this thing when you start talking about Airbnb and Verbo and all those things. Advertising nationally, maybe even internationally, to have people come and use your property, especially at the lake, where you have water, boats. Everybody at the lakes around Dexter Township, they have municipal sewer now, but they have portable, they have wells, so their water is reliant upon it. I can tell you that in Hamburg Township, already there's an incident down on on Fox Point where they allow these short term rentals. They have a public easement, actually a community easement next to this house. All the visitors to this house parked their cars in that easement. They had to get them out of there. The Hamburg police had to come and tow the cars off the street because the street was packed. Sewer authority had to give them an extra tap because they were using so much water, and they made them put a well on the house, a meter on the well. Those are impacts that people don't think about, but those are impacts that happen because people don't abide by the rules. This township has very little ability to enforce those rules whatsoever. We don't have a zoning, we have a zoning administrator, but we don't have a zoning enforcement officer. And our sheriff's department has now got a policy that, well, we're not going to pull you over just because your license plate isn't right. So you can only imagine what's going to happen to these complaints from people at at the lakes, in particular, where the houses are all very small lots, very close together. They're going to go out there and say, oh, you had noise? Well, okay, I'll put it in my log and goodbye. Then the township, who at the township is going to go out and listen to the noise? Who's going to take the call in the middle of the night? Or at twelve o'clock at night, at one o'clock in the morning? This is a disaster waiting to happen. It's easier for you folks to just say, based on our master plan, based on the smallness of the lots, the proximity of the homes to each other, it's not a good thing to have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Ginny Morgan, and I'm at seventy nine oh five Sower on North Lake. And I agree pretty much with what's been said. One thing that I would point out is that the people who are arguing in favor of short term rental have yet to come forward with proposed regulations, proposed fees, proposed understandings of what they would accept as fair, just, and equitable to use their property in violation of current zoning regulations. And therefore, despite the incredible work that the committee did, they're kind of shooting in the dark because you don't know. You might give them too much, you might give them too little. You're fashioning something that maybe they would accept, or maybe other people would accept, but you don't know. Because nobody who's in favor of the short term rental to try to make money off their own property in violation of the current zoning laws has propounded any proposed regulations that are acceptable. And like everyone else, this was a quiet residential place. When I talk to people, they go, oh, I don't know if it's, but I won't know one thing. I don't want to live next door to one. To me, that says it all. If you don't want to live next door to one, then there shouldn't be one.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no further, public comment at this point in the meeting will be closed. Agenda item six, public hearings. We have none tonight. And maybe just to kind of clarify a bit, the the main issue I think we will resolve tonight on short term rental is how the planning commission is going to proceed with it. So before the planning commission would make a recommendation to the township board, we have to hold a public hearing, which is not tonight. We'll have discussion about whether we think we'll be ready to do that in the June meeting. So action items, the first of which, the only one actually, is pulled over from previous meetings, the proposed changes to our internal bylaws. Based on our discussion in the last meeting, Fletcher had taken some comments and cleaned up some issues and gave it back to us. I trust everyone has had a chance to review that and formulated their opinion. Anybody care to have discussion, or do you like to jump right into a motion, after which we can have discussion?
Mr. Chair, there are two issues that I would like to raise before we go into discussion on the proposed changes. Number one, this is, I'm sure, an editorial oversight, but on page six of twelve, under Article Five Officers', Section E, Echo, Secretary's Duties. The paragraph currently reads, sub item three, review of the draft of minutes and submit them for the approval of the planning commission. The secretary may delegate this duty to planning staff. And then there is an orphan statement within fourteen days of the meeting each planning commission member. I'm not sure what that is supposed to mean. I think it might be a result of word processing, but I would recommend that the township zoning administrator check that and give us an explanation as to what that particular sentence or orphan is supposed to read. And the second item I have is on Article Six Meetings, we are now on page seven of twelve. Item Kivo, Public Participation. Item one, reading it as presented. All public comment on non agenda items or items not listed as action items on the agenda shall be presented at the beginning and end of the meeting, providing as were provided in the agenda. All public comment on items listed as action items on the agenda shall be presented during consideration of that action item. In addition, planning commissioners may direct questions to members of the public to help prepare, the public prepare for the meeting. Documents in the township's possession related to the item may be available, or shall be made available at Dexter Township Hall for inspection by members of the public before this meeting. This would be a proposal that I would make is that we add in there a comment of online or electronically available also being at our website for the general public rather than requiring people to come to the office to review something that with technology where you, where it is today, we should be able to easily put online.
Just one response to that. I think that makes sense in most every case. There could be a situation where there's, I don't know, a huge packet related to development or something that might be presented to us even in in hard copy. But I think staff could take that under advisement, figure out how to best incorporate what you just said. Would you like to make that as an amendment tonight, or refer that to staff and come back with that and and the other item that you mentioned, any other items to clean up that you'll take up in the future?
No, that, I would prefer that we refer this to staff because they are more familiar with their workload than I, of course, so they can give, staff can give us their opinion of this item, and I am quite willing to defer this to another another time.
Yes, please.
The board packets are posted online on the website prior to meeting, probably prior to meeting, or any?
Pretty much.
So people can go out to the website and see if they have.
Yeah, I think what Commissioner Birch is saying is that that ought to be formalized into our our process. And my question, kind of slight rebuttal to that, is there may be some cases where where that's not practical. It still needs to be available at the township hall for for physical inspection, but yeah, almost everything we've done since I've been on here. You know, with one possible development exception. I think all of that's available in eight and a half by eleven.
Well, Mr. Chair, I was no way suggesting that we not have it available at the township hall also. Just have it available electronically.
Yeah, that would sure be best in every case that we can do with that one. Back, some of us, I think, get it first that way, so it'd be good for, if nothing else, it'd be good to formalize that and make sure the public's aware.
Thank you. Those are my comments.
All right. Unless anybody has any objections, we will ask Fletcher to take Steve's comments into consideration and come back at a, whatever you deem to be an appropriate time, and we'll further tweak this. Anybody else have any other questions, comments? If there are none, anybody care to move the changes that have been presented to us in red tonight? Or not? I feel like I'm at a darn auction sometime, trying to, trying to get the bidding going, and then we'll, then we'll get some traction. Well, sensing a lack of enthusiasm, I think we could just, you know, kick this down the road and do it all later. All right.
Mr. Chair, I, sir, I move that consideration of the proposed amendments to the Dexter Township Planning Commission bylaws be postponed to our next meeting, giving the planning staff the opportunity to evaluate and recommend changes per my earlier request.
All right, moved by Commissioner Birch's there support.
Support.
Support by Abbott that we postpone this until our next meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
What was no? Motion carried. Discussion items. A is review of the Short Term Rental Committee memo. And just so everyone's aware, B then is the preliminary review of the draft ordinance. First, I would like to echo earlier comments that were, that were made thanks to the committee. And really commend them for the very thorough job in the report. A lot of thought, obviously. I especially appreciated that there were some dissenting opinions that were presented that I think really made it a much more complete process for those of us who are receiving it now. I suppose most of us have some questions on the specifics. I also kind of have some questions on on the real, you know, high level. How are we going to proceed on this? And and for me, it starts with, well, why are we doing it at all? What what do we actually need to do? What do we want to do? It seems that at a minimum, the planning commission would want to deal with the definition of short term rental, formalize that into the zoning ordinance, regardless of of how we feel on the topic, we at least need to get the definition clarified. And then there's, once or as a part of that, there's either two directions, of course, we can go. One would be, okay, now we've defined it. And our next step is add to the zoning ordinance that that's not allowed. Or we've defined it, now everybody knows what they are. And the planning commission's, I think, appropriate role at that point would be to help detail out the proposed ordinance in front of us, which culminates from planning commission and the things with the recommendation of the township board. Because the report, I think, I think rightly recommends that if the route the township is going to go is to allow short term rentals, that's a standalone ordinance. And it's just kind of obliquely referred to in in the zoning ordinance, but it's not appropriately part of the zoning ordinance. So first of all, let me ask a question. Does that, means that kind of jive with everybody's thoughts on it? We need to, we need to determine what are the directions that we're going to go off in. We don't necessarily need to determine those tonight. We could, we could, if we think we're ready by the end of this discussion or these two discussion items, we could decide that we wanted to set public hearing for next meeting. We could decide that we're not ready for a public hearing, and we want to have more detailed discussion, perhaps based on some questions that we're going to, that we're going to have tonight that might you know, alter the the proposed ordinance to an extent that it's not really the subject of a public hearing. Or I guess we could see if there's consensus that, well, this doesn't really seem like something Dexter Township should do, needs to do, that that shortens the process a bit, and we'd be ready for action at the next meeting, but it'd be in a, you know, in a negative sort of way. So some of the some of the questions slash comments I have, there's a a comment made on page two of the report. Michigan Court of Appeals has repeatedly determined that short term rentals are prohibited use in residential neighborhoods because they are commercial activities. I think if that was an entirely factual standalone statement, it would have, it would have different meaning, but I I think it's not standalone entirely factual statement. That I think what the courts have said is that lacking short term rentals being allowed in the various zoning ordinances that have arrived before them, it would not be allowed. But that, that doesn't mean that the courts have already cited this issue. Otherwise, committee wouldn't have done what they did. We wouldn't be talking about it tonight. It would be, it would be resolved. So that's that's somewhat of a technicality, but my understanding is that that in the case of Dexter Township, should should our zoning ordinance go to court as it is now, they would probably find the same way at the Michigan Court of Appeals, that, nope, you don't, you don't explicitly allow this. It's not actually a residential use, and you can only do short term rental in commercial. So that's just kind of my overall on because we've, we've heard that statement before in in previous discussions and as I said, if that stood alone, then the decision is made, we're done. I've got I don't know, kind of a philosophical, probably multiple questions, but of, some of them are mostly of the philosophical nature that if Dexter Township were to clearly prohibit short term rentals, kind of take the ambiguity, ambiguity out of it, mainly, I think, by defining what is a short term rental. Who would be harmed by that? And to what extent would they be harmed? And what would the remediation say be of that harm? Now, we heard, what was that, in October when we had the big meeting? There were some people that I thought made a an empathetic or or something that I think would be compelling empathetically that, hey, this is a major source of my income, and I didn't, you know, I didn't know that they weren't allowed in Dexter Township. That's really going to be a problem for me. But I would, I would ask the question. And it's, I guess hypothetical more than anything, because we can't get a, an opinion from township board tonight, or you know, a straw vote, but it would seem to me that the township does have within its power the ability to call a moratorium for some period. I don't know, two, three years, that would allow people who are in that situation to continue doing what they're doing and have a plan to exit from their business. So just kind of tossing that out there, if, when we look at, and it's, it's in line with some of the comments that we've received and some of the comments that were made tonight. It's in line with some of the comments that we've received and some of the comments that were made tonight. When we, when we balance. The. Larger community good against the interests of, of a few. How does the township come down on that and, and what is the damage being done? To whom is that damage being done and to what extent? Would there be damage if there was a, a more controlled? Way out of this. I think. Most of my other comments probably get into specifics of. The report and specifics of the wording then that, that's in the ordinance. But. Question for staff, I guess. Usually when the township adopts an ordinance change. Prior non-conforming uses would be grandfathered. The question I guess I have for you is. When? So in our current zoning ordinance, if we made some changes. I don't know what a good example is, but the, the keeping of animals was a, was a big one recently. If, if somebody has. Six cows and the new zoning ordinance said you can only have five. In fact, in our current zoning ordinance. It explicitly states that are there prior, if there are prior non-conformities, that. I don't think we ever used the term grandfathered, but you know, for. For vernacular, they're grandfathered in. So on the surface, it would seem to me that if we, if, if the township, this is going to be a planning commission. Action, it's going to be township ordinance or township ultimately would. Would. Approve. A zoning change that says, no, can't get, can't do short-term rentals. It would seem that. There would be some situations that would be grandfathered. Where I'm questioning is, but how far back does that go? Cause the two thousand and three ordinance doesn't have any provisions for short-term rentals. It does discuss bed and breakfast. I don't remember. You know, well before my time. But perhaps going back to the original zoning ordinance, which, you know, Jim might know, I think in the sixties maybe. I don't, you know, short-term rentals wasn't a thing. So it, it seems to me. That there was never an opportunity, if, maybe I should preface this by. If the, the statement that, hey, if it's not explicitly allowed in the zoning ordinance, it's prohibited, if that's true. Kind of my logic tree here, if that's true and short-term rentals were never. Allowed explicitly. If the township does anything to restrict them. There is really no such thing as grandfathered.
You're correct. So the existing S T Rs within the community. Would be considered an illegal, non-conforming use. It wasn't permitted by the township, thus it can't be grandfathered in.
Okay.
And then the draft language drafted by Carlisle Wardman Associates. They specifically state that S T R operators prior to the adoption of this ordinance have thirty days to comply. With the provisions outlined in that ordinance. So. Those that are currently in operation, they need to adhere to everything the planning commission. And the township board agrees upon regulation wise and get licensed within thirty days of the adoption.
But it's also possible that there will be no adoption, in which case. I, I mean, just to me, it just kind of frames. The discussion because and, and I, I could have asked that in probably two sentences instead of, you know, several pages, but. It. It, it's unlike a lot of other things we do where, okay, township. Wants to tweak this a little bit, we're going to go in a slightly different direction, but all you that have been doing whatever you've been doing for however long. You get to continue to do it, but that's not going to be the case. Now you. You answered a slightly different question, I think. Yeah, you've got thirty days to comply with the new ordinance, but. If there is no new ordinance and there's simply a definition that this is what a short-term rental is and we're not recognizing. But that's a legal use in Dexter Township. That's probably not a thirty-day issue. But everybody. Everybody is already. An illegal, non-conforming use. My issue would be that. The township, probably not the planning commission would, if that's the direction the township wanted to go, they'd have to figure a way to. You know, somewhat. Relieve the shock of that because I gotta believe that there are a lot of people that have gotten into this without any clue that it wasn't allowed.
So you're essentially saying, if the planning commission leaned towards prohibiting S T Rs. The potential extension of the current moratorium to allow a more graceful. Exit from this commercial venture, not immediate enforcement and. Legal action from the township.
Yes, and, and that. You know, if it went that way, that could be a recommendation from the planning commission, you know, it's not my business to tell the township board how they ought to handle that. But I, I would think that. That there is. The possibility that there could be, you know, a couple of year withdrawal from that business. And if people have a house in Dexter Township that's short-term rental. They can sell that and, and I know this is going to sound, you know, way simpler than it is in real life, but they sell that, they can go buy one on the other side of the lake. And be back in business. Or, you know, those that have. Maybe dabbled in it, decide that I'm not going to dabble in it anymore, but those who are dependent upon it or it's their. It's their commercial business, which I think to me falls in a little bit different category. Those are not. You know, those are not in my mind the same as homeowners that, you know what? I'd like to make some money for a few weeks out of the summer and, and I'm going to rent my house out, but regardless of what the situation is. And if the township does have it within their power to not make this a jarring painful thing on those who legitimately have depended on it.
Well, when you talk about, there, when you talk about, it sounds like you're talking about a, an extended moratorium. The, the only issue with that and Linda Seabird can clarify that. That when the short-term rental committee was. Created and the moratorium was put on short-term rentals. Linda brought it to our attention to the short-term rental committee that there was a huge increase. On Airbnb, was it? And B R B, no Linda?
I don't think I'd say huge, but there was an increase.
Okay, well, I think, okay, it seemed to me like that's how you described it in our committee meetings, but you mentioned that there was an increase and so. You know, if we did a moratorium, we probably need to. Figure out how to lessen. More people coming on and do.
Yeah, go back to last October. Who did we identify in October when this issue came up? Yeah.
Like who can prove that they've been.
Yeah.
Operating without incident and, you know.
Yeah, your point is well taken. It, it sounds like maybe there were some opportunists out there that said, I guess I better get on this now or.
Mister Chair, sorry, may I support? Commissioner Abbott's comments there, it has been suggested to me in context outside of this meeting. That if we were to allow people to demonstrate to the satisfaction of. The zoning administrator, they had been successfully in the short-term run, short-term rental business for two years. That these people should be allowed to continue, but it would be a. Limited to those who had been actually performing. Two years of that short-term rental.
And, and those are some of the details I think we, we need to get into a. As part of our discussion tonight, we kind of have to get a, a sense of direction and if the direction is that, well, we think that. That short-term rentals should be allowed and now what are the restrictions? I think that's a, a good discussion. I'm still up here someplace. Sure-term rentals appropriate for Dexter Township and we're not keeping anybody off of Portage Lake. They can go to the other side and, and rent all they want, so. It, it's. And at the same time saying that, I, I know that there are some residents. Who are going to be affected by it because that's a business they're in. If that's the way it goes, I'm going to look for some sort of, some sort of balance there, but. It might be that I'm just yammering and that's not the way it's going to go because everybody wants short-term rentals. We're just going to argue about what should the conditions be? So what's, what's everybody else's thoughts? I, I, I kind of like at this point, the bigger question is this, is this something that is good and healthy for Dexter Township?
Well. Just one comment. You know, as being a member of the short-term rental committee. Part of my final opinion piece that each of the members of the committee were asked to propose. Last fall, staff noted there was at least two dozen short-term rentals as of October. And that was going into the late fall, early winter season where that number was probably low. Now we're back into the spring and new rentals are popping up again, the, the rental season is starting for the summer. I think by June, if you look, there could be three dozen or more in Dexter Township. And short-term rentals are just growing in popularity. They truly are. I feel like they're taking over some of the, the short-term hotels. You know, they're becoming that short-term hotel. And if we don't regulate it, I feel like they're going to continue to exist. And we're not going to have any enforcement or any regulation in, in place for the township to. Deal with what's out there now and it's only going to grow. And if there's three or four dozen by the summer, how is the township going to enforce all of those? Even if the majority are operating peacefully and not causing any disturbance. But as the numbers continue to rise, I think the disturbances will continue to rise. Short-term rentals are, are now out. As a public name for the township and they're going to be complaining more because they're going to know that, well, even though there's a moratorium. You know, they're not allowed in the township. And so I just want you to keep that in mind if something, if, if. Planning commission, let's say decides to not allow, they're going to still exist out there. And how do you control the ones that exist in the, the long term? And keep the disturbances to a minimum. I think it will be a challenge. And enforcement either way you go is going to be a huge challenge. You can't expect like one person. To regulate and enforce everything out there. I, I think it will be a significant amount of time. Not only the enforcement, but to get an S T R license, getting the fire department involved, doing the inspections. It's just a lot to manage and whether the township really has the capacity to manage those issues. I, I question that. Either way you go, I, I question their ability to do that and I. Just from experience, we have a newer short-term rental on our small dirt road and rural residential. And there were people enjoying it this past week, saw them walking their dog and their bikes and they were all there. But then we have a nuisance down at the corner where I've had a neighbor complain about this nuisance for the past year and the township's done nothing about it. And the neighbor said, no, I'll just keep complaining and hopefully something will be done. And it's a much smaller nuisance than S T R nuisance. And the township still isn't doing anything about it. So it just makes me feel like. I, I've kind of lost faith in the ability for. You, you know, Fletcher can't do everything, you know, he can't get out there and do every little zoning disturbance. And still do his job and still support all these bodies. So I just. Want everyone to keep that in mind, no matter what we, what way we go and enforcement is going to be the issue because they're not going to go away. I don't think S T Rs will go away.
Yeah, I, I appreciate those comments and, and to me, it. It goes way beyond that. If we can't do everything that you're saying we can't do now, which. I think. We've mentioned it, we've seen a lot of comments from the public about it. How, and, and it doesn't, maybe I'll fall on Fletcher because it would require a real zoning. Ordinance enforcement officer, not, not just director of planning and zoning to do that, but. How are we going to go from? Hey, I just found out that you're short-term renting and that's not legal in a township, so you got to knock it off. How do we go from that to, oh, well, we've got an ordinance now. Let me check and see if you've got the right number of parking spaces. How many bedrooms do you have? How many people are you gonna, are you gonna have here? The, the level of detail gets so much greater when we decide to. Acknowledge, formalize S T Rs that I think that goes way beyond what the township is equipped to do. And yeah, there's discussion about, well, the fees have to be such that they're going to pay for. Pay for what? One, one full-time zoning enforcement officer, two, three? As I think one of the speakers said tonight. It, it's not something that we can really rely on the sheriff's department for. Township, I think, is going to have to be mostly self-sufficient. Yeah, the town, the, the sheriff's department might get out there in forty-five minutes to. Break up a fight or something, but township is going to have to be self-sufficient. We've got a. You know, the, the helping hand is at the end of our own arm, as they say.
And, and I know the fire department would be open to doing initial inspections, annual inspection or every three-year inspection after it's been. Approved, but, but that would come with a fee also, you know, the fire department's not going to do that for.
Yeah, sure, sure. Yep.
Mister Chair. To your earlier series of choices. I think you mentioned three basic ideas. One, do nothing. Two, acknowledge S T Rs and prohibit them. And three, acknowledge S T Rs and regulate them. It seems to me that doing nothing is not a good option because. Problems exist and they will persist and grow. We know that this is a growing industry. And people find it very attractive to come to lakes and beautiful places. To stay for a few days. Therefore, I think we're left with two choices, regulate or prohibit. Either way, in my opinion, as has been said by. Commissioner Heard that. Enforcement will be required. It does require additional staff, I believe. Because it will take many hours to pursue these small complaints. And take action when necessary to alleviate the problem. And if you regulate, there's a great deal more. There's the application to review the licensing process. The renewal process of licensing, the, the. Rejection of, of, or the removal of licenses if, if they've misbehaved. And that's going to cost a lot of money and that will have to be a resource that is replenished somehow. So it, it is. Somehow. It has to be calculated what that projected cost is. I don't know how you do that. Or who does it? But it's, and it may not be up to this board to, to determine that. Maybe up to the trustees or, or another body. But those costs really need to, we gotta get a handle on it. Because that is a, a significant factor in this decision. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
I'd like to first thank Commissioner Berry for his comments. And I also express, wish to express our. Thanks to Chairperson Heard and her committee because I think they did a phenomenal job of presenting us with. The. Pros and cons of whether or not we want to allow short-term rentals in. Uh, pros and cons of whether or not we want to allow short term rentals in Dexter Township. I can tell you right now that uh, hopefully I won't foreclose your opinion of the conversation. I will uh, be opposed to short term rentals in Dexter Township. Why, several reasons, one, we all know as our training in zoning. Has implied we want to avoid spot zoning. But if someone wants to short term rental their property, they have effectively made that property, a commercial property. For the purpose of that operation. Secondly. Uh. As you may be aware, I with my family own a resort motel up on Holton Lake. And our clientele and the way we operate is falls almost within the definition of short term rentals. We rarely have people stay over a month and most are there for the weekends. And ninety percent of our clientele are wonderful people. We would like to have them back every year, in fact, most of them do come back every year. We've had families that have been there since the nineteen forties that still rent from us, we weren't there, but the property was. However, we also have that group that makes it very uncomfortable for everyone. In the now twenty years that we've owned the place, I think we have had the police call. Uh, at least five times out, and this is with a full time caretaker on the property. And it's not our caretaker that's calling the cops, it is the other people in the uh, establishment. That are finding uh, the activities that are being employed by some people, just plain owners. Our neighbors have been quite tolerant of us, we have not had a problem there. But the problem has become serious enough that we have uh, completely changed our operating philosophy. To where during certain periods of the year, namely Bud Bash and Tip Up Town, we don't even open anymore. Because the property damage was so significant that it was not economical for us to be open during that period of time to have the place trashed. So with my experience there, with my attitude regarding. The commercialization of the property here, notwithstanding the additional enforcement. Requirements that would have been uh, identified already, I will. Uh, rest myself here with the fact that I will be opposed to short term rentals in Dexter Township.
Thank you. Anybody else want to uh, kinda get some thoughts out there, or we figure next steps?
I'll I'll just add in here, I'm biting my tongue because I have so many questions and I know that's gonna dig into the minutia. And really what you're talking about right now is sort of the bigger picture, I'm gonna take one step even higher, just to help me understand process here. When it comes to those questions, are are we directing those to staff? Are we directing those to the members of the commission that were part of that task or I can't remember what you guys were called. Whichever it was, the short term committee, um, who do we ask these questions of?
Well, I think that's a little bit pre-form, so if there's a a question maybe as to fact. As you pointed out, we've got a couple of members of the committee on the planning commission and they may want to. Answer those. If it's a a question of, hey, how about? This versus that, or you know, we're talking about degree of something. I think uh, that might more appropriately be directed towards staff if we want some follow up, some research. Recommendation into the future.
Okay, then my one other just sort of off the top question, um, probably then somewhat factual. Addresses a comment, you made plus a comment that's something that's in the packet in the um. The article that was attached about do short term rentals and lakes really mix? And in the back portion, there is a statement that says that Michigan. I guess I could read it, um. In general, Michigan courts do not allow STRs in single family residential zoning districts, even when the local zoning ordinance is silent. Those cases and similar analogous deed restriction cases include, and goes on to list. I don't know, eight, ten, fifteen different cases. Do we know what? Are those really cases or precedents that would affect us in this decision?
The little bit of research I did. Yeah, these, there are a lot of cases, but. Only some of those deal in more like our situation, so some of those are um. Their HOA regulations enforceable, are deed restrictions that might be outside of HOA, are they enforceable? And that's why I had the problem with the kind of blanket statements that Michigan Court of Appeals has found that. Yeah, what I think they have found and where it says in the article especially, I think it is more in spite of the that. To the absence of any language permitting a short term rental. Which the township could allow. The, the like fallback position is that when you short term rent. It's a commercial application and by default then commercial doesn't, it would not be allowable. In anything other than a commercial zoning district, so that was, that was my take on it when I uh. When I dug into some of the, some of the articles and uh, part of the opinion from Court of Appeals.
So the statement that you made Marty, it's an absence of any regulations for STRs. It's when there isn't, when they're not allowed, it's usually the Court of Appeals. Basically upholds the, what am I trying to say?
Yeah, and.
It's, you know, if let's say a STR owner, um. The township has told them that it cannot exist, they're not allowed in the township. The STR owner takes it to the Court of Appeals, the Court of Appeals upholds the county township's decision to not allow. But that's an absence of any regulations from the township.
Okay.
Otherwise allowing them.
Then that would bring me to my follow up question being in your process, did you discover anything that? Broad question, that we have to be concerned about legally, and the one that comes to mind right away is this concept of a business. Is it a business or not?
So it's generating income, so I would, my personal opinion would be, yes, it's a business, it's a commercial business. Cuz it's a generating income, I mean, we've talked about it being similar maybe to like a home occupation, people who are working out of their. Home, selling pot, like pottery or something that they're crafting from home. They're selling it out of their home, you know, it's a home occupation. But it is generating significant income and the courts have seen it as a commercial business.
And. Under that concept then, probably brings me to my biggest concern about this, which is. A business, if it truly is a business. And even though most of them don't cause trouble with the neighbors, but because it's a business, we have to look at it a little bit differently. When we're looking at residential zoning and we're looking at residential uses and we're looking at. The enjoyment of property that everybody has the right to, in addition to independent decisions on what you're gonna do on your property. We move a step beyond just being a neighbor. And so that's kind of one of my biggest concerns there, like I said, I've got a lot of others that I'm not gonna delve into, but because the law somewhat. Defines what we have to work with and that's where I wanted to make sure I understood. What confines we have to work within.
And I also think if. The draft regulations that are part of the packet, I just wanna be clear, they, those did not come from the committee, those were drafted by the consultant. Soon after they saw the very first draft of the memo. And until Fletcher told me about it last week, I was even unaware that regulations were being drafted for you to look at tonight. But if any regulations were recommended to move forward at some point, an attorney would have to look at them. Because there are numerous legal questions that were brought up throughout the process that. No one but an attorney is really gonna be able to answer.
And I I guess I I missed my opportunity, you guys did a phenomenal job here. And when I looked at this packet, it was just impressive, the scope that you covered, hopefully that it does represent people's opinions. That was sort of one of my concerns, but again, what you did there was a whole lot of good work, and then at first I looked at that, the draft and I thought, what is this about? But what I realized was, it gave me a really good, put me in my zoning head. And respond to what's written in the the draft, then to look at the values that go into it, does it represent the values or not? So as a whole, I think that packet was good, the research and the work you guys put into it is absolutely phenomenal. And um. Recognize that moving forward is gonna be tough. And I know that you two in particular have put a lot of work into getting this far and you're in with this part also, which is gonna be a lot of work moving forward. But I'm glad you're here to help kind of answer questions and advise us to, and as the dissenting opinions show, be open about the conversations. Cuz this has to be open and same with public, we need to truly understand that. We were represented, and that brings me to my last little question, which is. Um, yup, Commissioner Meyer left some notes for us. Um, and one of the comments she made was that overall, I felt that it looks like folks are in favor. Wait a minute, maybe I'm reading it wrong, while the folks in favor constitute a higher percentage of respondents. I was kinda getting the impression that it was the opposite and that more people that opposed it had responded. Which is correct, or what was your impression?
I I could just say my impression was at least thirty percent were consistently answering that they were against it. That leaves, you know, then seventy percent, which which side are they on? And it was hard to really tell which side they were on, they were kind of. Sometimes split, sometimes it depended on the question.
Um, response, my problem with the survey, and I felt this way all along, was that, one, it was designed in a way. That it excluded a lot of people from the survey, look, my mom wouldn't know how to use a QR code. Or even to go online to fill out a survey, so I feel disappointed that. The township didn't expend a little extra money to get a fair representation, I mean. How many residents are in our township versus how many actually filled out the?
Well, to be clear, it was the committee's decision to do the survey, not the township, we we could have gone any route to get public feedback.
Started, I had another trustee give me a list of survey, potential survey questions. So that that survey was going to go out, whether, i- it was going to go out. Um, and I just feel that it it could have been, we could have had a broader scope of people had we. Gone more than just a QR code designed in the mail.
I think if we had done more than the survey, the process would have taken a lot longer.
You think so?
If we had a additional. Just public information meetings when it was basically the five of us.
Yeah.
Doing everything, we didn't really have consultant or staff support and. I I think. It was the board wanted us to kind of wrap it up originally by the end of February and there's no way you're gonna wrap that up. Other than February, and I think we could have gone on easily for another six months, and we knew that wasn't really possible.
Right, I mean, it's a very broad subject and we have people who are hanging. On waiting for this moratorium to end, but like to your point. We're going to have to have enforcement because there's more short term rental operators now than there probably was in October twenty twenty four. And people are gonna be less tolerant. So whether we move this forward and try to rein it in with some sort of. Scope that they have to operate within, or we just say, you know what, we're not allowing it. We're still gonna need enforcement. And that money's gonna have to come from somewhere.
Anybody have anything else on the uh, on the committee's memo, maybe uh, we should slide into the. Text of the. Proposed uh, draft ordinance. And I guess I would just start by saying if we do get to the. Ordinance details part. I'm not saying I'm gonna go keeping of animals crazy, but there are a lot of details in there that that just strike me as being. Like I've got, I've got a problem with the entire percentage, I don't care, you know, the one, five, three, whatever percent, the concept of percent. Seems odd to me, where where's, you know, where's the uh, the logic in that? An entire neighborhood could be wiped out and and still be way below the the threshold, and when I say wiped out, I just mean. It it just turned from owner occupied to maybe even seasonal, but. Remote owner occupied perhaps, uh, short term rental operation. It it would seem more logical to me. Although I have problems with this too, that. You can't have. These closer than X number of feet, a hundred feet, five hundred feet, whatever, so. So if we were to get to that point, we would lessen the impact on a particular neighborhood. But. Even at that, that kind of spirals us off into, okay, well, what's, what's the right answer for that before we start recommending an ordinance? Well, nuts, I don't know, fifty feet, five hundred feet, who who knows, who studies that, how do we come up with a?
Well, before you move on, if I could just interject. Um, so Commissioner Abbott was absent from one of the committee meet meetings. And we did have an alternate from the Board of Trustees, Karen Sekenga, and when she attended. It was her suggestion to do the percentages and ensure they have a cap. And um, so I'm just giving you the background on where they came from. And at that point in time, everyone agreed that that was an okay presentation of doing the percentages with a cap. And she had suggested five percent. Without being able to really digest all that information and and what that meant. We were fairly unfavorable of that, but then when it came back at the end, the five percent seemed very high when you looked at the total numbers. And that's when at our last meeting, we were looking at the three percent and the one percent, and even the one percent. Seemed more in line to what was actually existing out there. Um, but it was the the trustee member that felt very strongly that we have a cap. And that it should be in a percentage, and I'm only letting you know that for background information.
So if Karen's watching, she'll probably uh.
It's fine, I don't, I mean.
Probably call me out on it.
Well, that's, that's fine, I mean, I just wanna be open.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
And if you think about it, if you look at the caps and and they do put quite a light on the situation. Three percent, that's eighty nine houses, wait. That's a ridiculously high number.
Amazing.
I, you know, the one percent cap seemed reasonable in that we already had. Probably that many that have been operating without incident. And so the one percent seemed more palatable than taking those people's income away.
And. What you just said, that we've had these without incident, yeah, and now we don't typically have visibility to the calls that staff is taking. But it was my understanding in October that that was. I think we kinda had a don't ask, don't tell prior to that and you know, okay, everybody, everybody knows what's going on, but it's not a problem. So one incident. Out of however many STRs we have over how many years. That. I think is part of the consideration also is. Should a person legitimately, uh, and when I say legitimate, I'm, I should use better terminology. There are, there are. Companies that come into an area and buy this house for the sole purpose of short term renting that. Whatever they're gonna get out of it for the, for the year, you know, a lot in the summer, less in the winter, maybe. Versus, we have a long term resident of Dexter Township. Who decided that, yeah, that's what they wanna do with their, with their home for a few weeks out of the year. And they're considerators, they're neighbors, it's not a problem, I I think somebody raised in one of the comments with the report that uh. It might be that for some neighbors, short term rental is better neighbors than somebody who stuck with a terrible neighbor next to them. That's pretty much out of our purview, but, but when I try to put together some, you know, coherent thoughts and what's the logical progression of this? It's, it's not that short-term rentals are inherently bad. But to me, short-term rentals have the opportunity to be bad, to be a negative on the neighborhood. And it's those neighborhoods, it's the, the actual residents of Dexter Township that, that I feel an obligation to. And everybody else can figure out how they're going to divest themselves of, you know, legal operation. So I wanna talk about the, uh, some of the details of the ordinance. We'll move on to, unless there's an objection, we'll move on to a, the preliminary review of draft STR ordinance language. And I don't know, that, that go ahead and, and have at it, cause I could probably pick something on every paragraph, but, and I'm not saying that, that it's bad, it's just, okay, this is this is almost like a pro forma document in front of us, how do we wanna? And I'm not saying that Carlisle Hortman didn't take into consideration Dexter Township, but how do we tailor this to Dexter Township if this is the route that we wanna go? They, they gave us a real good starting point, now what do we do with it?
I use it as an opportunity to ask more questions. So I'm looking at, it's packet page eighty-five of ninety-four, which is page number five of the memo. It's section four. Item B five, license availability. One of the questions that came up to me in my mind with this concept of capping, setting a certain number of licenses is at what point are we creating a market for the licenses themselves? And especially with this concept of the corporate entities that have more money backing the investment. Are we actually creating a secondary market for STR licenses?
Almost hypothetically, like a liquor license or something, it can be bought and sold with certain conditions.
And especially if we choose to cap low. I'm not too sure, so that's, that, that's kind of one of the concerns that popped into my head when it came to availability. The other one is a little bit of a dichotomy with those license, that license concept that has to do with zoning districts. And they do mention here, subject to limits established by zoning district. I know we haven't even started to talk about that idea of could these rules be different in different districts? But again, it just, it's this, it added that complication that at some point, as we parse through this, if we are trying to find a way to craft, to make this a yes versus a no type thing, that, um, I feel that we should look at that a little bit more closely because is this an unintended consequence, this, this marketplace? Um, so that's just one little comment regarding the license availability. The other one that I had, had to do sort of with master plan. And some of the discussions about what's business, what's not. One of the things that I didn't see too much addressing, they talked about it under the accessory dwelling unit. Which means you have the owner on the same property. We've been making the presumption with these STRs that we're talking about, someone's renting the whole house out. Was there ever any discussion or did it ever come up that we're looking at a bedroom in the house? Or a part of the house? Um, rather than just completely renting the entire property, which I believe is where the market is.
If I could ask Fletcher, would that fall under bed and breakfast if you just rented out a room? I mean, without, without looking it up, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, because there's, there's more in that paragraph that, that defines it. But, but I think what we're talking about in that situation is if the owner is in the house, that's probably closer to a bed and breakfast. Is there really a difference between the owner being in the house or being in what used to be grandma's space over the garage or something?
When I think about Airbnb, when they, the way they started, it was, do you have an extra room that you need to rent out? And so that was really the concept there. In my mind though, I have been separating a bed and breakfast as a business that's established, it operates under the business rules of the zoning code. And that's already addressed. What we're trying to look at is the things that aren't addressed, namely the STRs. But that there is these different class, I don't think there are even classifications. Some people just rent a room out, some people rent out two rooms, some people rent the upstairs, some rent the whole house. And at this point in your discuss, I guess probably questions then to, you know, to, to Commissioner Heard and, and Abbott here, was that a differentiation that was part of the discussions?
So it mostly falls under that definition of what a short-term rental is, and it's something being rented for less than thirty days. Like if I choose to rent out a room in my house, I live alone, I have three extra bedrooms. Anyone can do that, anyone can run out their whole house once it becomes more than thirty days. I mean, that's just, uh, something that's legal for everyone to do. It starts falling when it's short-term, when it gets under that thirty-day window. And that's what it, I mean, that's just part of the definition of the short-term rental. But anyone can run out a room if it's more than thirty days.
And then again, what that brought me to the concern to is that concept of the housing stock, you know, in our area. If more and more of the, the house versus the accessory dwelling units, cause accessory dwelling units are not allowed to be rented. But if the owner moved into the accessory unit, started renting out the house, is that affecting the stock? Or even similarly, someone just renting out a room to somebody that could be the neighbor's kid that needs a place for a year or something, which is long-term rentals. And the other element that goes with that is the affordability piece of it. If we are converting long-term rentals, which used to be the way people work into homeownership. If those are all becoming short-term rentals, then are we actually taking away the ability? Sort of different ways of moving up, moving on and becoming independent, you know, for the kids that have grown up in the neighborhood or in the, the township. And so that's where, again, keep this to the point. The master plan, that brings me back to how we just make sure that these, the way it's written in here, that we are somehow referencing master plan goals and values to make sure that those two are really well-aligned.
If, if I can address part of that, that what you just mentioned was a possible unintended consequence that we did not want to have. And I don't remember, I know we've had discussions on it before. Well, Steve might be the only one that was around back then. It was either at the time of the current zoning ordinance, right, as it was being adopted. I came on right as it was being adopted, or it might have been part of the master plan process, which case I don't know, three of those might have been that allowing somebody to live in, in auxiliary dwelling unit was desirable under the circumstances that you just described. There's, there's a kid who hasn't quite become independent, but we can at least put him out in that building or an in-law that, that can't live totally independently, but can maintain some independence by living in that outbuilding above the garage typically. But what we did not want to have happen was have that be the enabler for somebody three months of the summer or whatever can go move themselves into that unit and short-term rent the main house.
You know, part of the master plan, uh, short, short, uh, term rentals really are only brought up in one paragraph of the master plan. Of course, there are other sections of the master plan that you
Kind of oblique at that, isn't it?
That you could relate to short-term rentals. But it specifically says accessory dwelling units are being converted into short-term rentals, which negates their value as additional long-term housing unit. So it was my opinion, my personal opinion on the committee, that we shouldn't be going against anything that is currently in the master plan. And again, there are other sections, you could say, you know, with the commercial use is already against the master plan. But calling out STRs, these accessory dwelling units, which Fletcher said we don't have an exact number. Like staff couldn't pull out an exact number of what currently exists. It could be seen as two ways, it could be seen as, well, that at least the property owner would still be on the site
Yes ma'am.
to oversee any short-term rental of an accessory dwelling unit. But the intent of the accessory dwelling unit is to allow for some long-term rental housing stock that can be used for, you know, the granny flat or the family member that needs a long-term place to stay on-site, but wants to have separate accommodations, kitchen facilities, that sort of thing. And if we consider converting all of those to short-term rentals, I think really does negate their value as that accessory, as an accessory dwelling unit. So, and I didn't wanna go against the master plan on that specific paragraph. So it wasn't in my opinion to advocate to convert accessory dwellings into STRs as part of the committee. But again, that was just my personal opinion, I can't speak for every member on the committee.
Well, and, and part of what you just said is something that I kind of, I kind of wrestle with. That I think short-term rentals could be an okay thing, maybe even a good thing if it's homeowner, a regular homeowner that decides that maybe they wanna go on vacation someplace else and, and it's a perfect opportunity to make money. Or maybe they just wanna make money and, and, you know, let's rent our place out for a part of the summer versus a commercial multi-property enterprise. Cause our Dexter Township homeowner is still gonna come back and live next to their neighbors. And they're gonna get feedback, I presume, if it didn't go well. And I would expect that they're going to make the appropriate adjustments. Maybe not, but that's a different, kind of a, a whole different classification to me versus remote owners. And I don't think there's a way to differentiate those. I don't know that it would be legal for us to differentiate those. So our, to me, our solution has to work best for Dexter Township, our residents and everybody else just gonna have to adapt.
So, and Fletcher, if you, can you correct me if I'm wrong? But as far as I know, it is legal to rent out your home on a short-term basis, but not for more than fourteen days out of the year. Do you know that for, if that's a, like a state law, federal law or? I, I can, I've read about that a couple of times and it's, has to do with, if, um, I think like the definition of the business that you can rent it out for fourteen days.
Right, I'll need to refer back to that question. I'll, uh, write that down and provide you with an answer.
Or, or could that have been on somebody else's ordinance?
No, it's, uh, it has something to do with, you can legally do that and not have to be a business to do that. And if you could check into that for us, uh, I mean, that's like seven weekends out of the summer right there that someone could rent, rent their home.
Yeah, interesting.
Um, seven, Friday and Saturday nights, times. That's a lot.
Without being classified as
As a business, right? I've read that in a couple of places, but I do need clarification on what that falls under.
Yes, staff will follow up with our consultants and our, our legal counsel, uh, and provide you with an answer ASAP. I'll email the entire commission, uh, the feedbacks I receive on that.
And then, and just, I'm sorry, and just a reminder, if Fletcher or anybody else does, uh, email a whole bunch of us, if we have any further questions or responses, send those directly to Fletcher. Don't copy any of the rest of us, so we don't inadvertently get into, uh, you know, an out-of-sight, round-grabbing discussion.
And then I actually have one last point, which is based upon Commissioner Barry's comments. Section eight and probably a few other bits, foster township taxpayers. Item B, no portion of these responsibilities shall place an undue burden or increased financial burden on the general taxpayers of Dexter Township. Sounds to me that no matter what we decide, we're gonna, something's gonna have to happen there. And so I don't know what that means within your realms, Fletcher. But if something needs to be drafted up that comes as a recommendation or whatever out of this board, there's something we're gonna have to look at there.
I think, um, investigating a fee schedule that would cover the cost of hiring an enforcement person, uh, will be absolutely necessary regardless of, um, what direction the planning commission goes. That's something that the planning commission should consider. You know, further investigation on proper fee schedules, what other adjacent communities are doing, uh, to ensure proper enforcement. And limiting that burden on the residents and taxpayers.
And for the sake of, um, argument for this investigation that you just mentioned, um, let's consider the limit to be one percent or thirty, thirty STRs for the township. So how many hours do you estimate and what cost, so? Does the rest of the board feel that's reasonable?
Yeah, it's good.
Oh, yeah, it is.
That's the last of my top list of questions.
Anybody else have, have anything?
So I know in, um, section five of the regulations under the occupancy standards, item two and three, when it's talking about bedroom size, um, it's actually square feet related to each person. And those are pretty standard regulations that we found kind of across the board with a lot of regulations are out there that the first bedroom intended for a short-term rental must be seventy square feet for the first person. And then fifty square feet for each additional person in that bedroom. So it can be ten by
Are you looking in the committee report or are you looking in the?
We're looking at, we're talking about the regulations right now.
Page seven or eighty-seven of, uh, ninety-four in the packet.
And so for two people, that would be a hundred and twenty square feet, like a, basically a ten by twelve room for two people. And then we talked about the potential for one additional person in that room if there was an infant or a child, small child that could be sharing the bedroom. We did talk about that and that's something I can email you as a possibility to have.
Sure, I wrote that down, um, adding first person and per person on the, on the next paragraph. And I will also get with Dexter Area Fire Department, make sure they're okay with that language as well. And that's what they wanna see, uh, in the ordinance.
What constitutes a bedroom, at, at least in the, in the old days, when I used to be aware of, more aware of such things, a, a bedroom had to have everything that we have here plus a closet. But for purposes of this, can you sweep some people in the living room and that becomes the bedroom? I mean, any, any room where you can sweep people, if it meets the space requirements, does that count as a bedroom under this?
So there were some regulations that we found um, in the jurisdictions we looked at in Washtenaw County, where they would have something very similar for seventy square feet for, for first person, fifty square feet for each additional person in that bedroom. And then one additional person per floor. You know, like if there's first floor, a living quarter, second floor, like one additional person per finished floor that could occupy. And I, I really think it's up to the fire department to see what were occupancy could be. Like if there was a pullout couch in the living room, is there still emergency egress? You know, I mean, I may
I'll make sure somebody doesn't take a walk in closet and turn it into a bedroom.
Right, and that wouldn't, I I mean, it needs to have a door and then emergency egress to get out some.
That's defined, that's defined in the building code.
Right.
So the the building code defines, but requires egress either through a window. Or another means, a second means of egress out of the out of the space and. It has to have a wooden, it has to have a window, so it can be a closet, but um but there are definitions in the building code already. And and according to this document, the building has to meet. Safety regulations by the building code, so it's already kind of covered there.
And I'd say parking is a big limiting factor for occupancy, you could have. Five bedrooms, potentially added an addition or a second floor that has multiple bedrooms, but you only can have two cars in the driveway. That that limits the renters ability um to expand the occupancy unless they. Expand that parking lot.
That that's a good point, and quite ironically, if I am remembering the facts correctly. The the way this came to us is there was a complaint, the township acted on it, the the. People who owned the property came to the planning commission with. A request for zoning amendment, so that they paid their fee, and they presented us. A text, this is what we want the zoning amendment to be, which if I remember correctly, came from Hamburg Township. And the ironic part of that is, I I think when we were all done with that discussion. It it was pointed out that. Had the township adopted that, that wouldn't even have remedied their situation because they didn't have the parking required. That that ordinance would have defeated them anyhow. So it's, I don't know, almost an odd set of circumstances that we're dealing with what we're dealing with right now. Anybody else have?
Mister Chairman, I guess I have a a comment, several, but. And this is assuming that we are, of course. Considering the possibility of of pursuing, allowing STRs and regulating them. And if that's the road road we go down, my comments are as follows, that on section five of short term rentals, which is. I'm not sure what page of the. Section five, it's a page. Eighty nine of ninety four, or page nine of the report. Regarding, and this is not in order of importance, but in order of the the document. It regarding watercraft safety, it seems to me that. The board should consider public safety on the water as an important feature of this. And to limit. The use of watercraft. Or not allow it, one or the other. It currently, I believe, just says it's a it uh that a renter may use the. Owner's boat or watercraft with their written permission. I would add to that. That they should have. Each operator should have onsite in their possession, a boater's safety, a boating safety certificate issued by the Michigan DNR. Most boater boater, I think if the sheriff stops you, you need to have one of those unless you're. Of a certain age. And that that I believe would help in making sure that we don't have. Unsafe boating practices.
And since you're in that area on on page eighty nine of ninety four on J ownership limit and. And again, I don't want to bog us down in details if. We're not headed in a certain direction, but. What was the was was there discussion on on how practical it was to enforce ownership? Like Alicia and I could have an LLC and we own one, Dan and I have an LLC and we own one, Chandler and I have an LLC and we own one. How many do I own? Do I own three? Do I own one and a half? And and how does the township even dig into that, that? And there again, it gets to. Our Dexter Township resident that wants to short term rent their place, that's not an issue. But somebody who does this as a large commercial business, I I don't even know how the township. Could augur into that deep enough because you can.
Yes.
You know, complicate it and confuse it. And then we have something that, okay, everybody, we've got you protected, but as a practical matter, we really don't.
I agree, that's problematic, that's, there are many ways to skirt that rule.
And just as a general statement, there's many ways to skirt every rule, so even if we thought we had a pretty. You know, pretty tight ordinance, somebody's going to figure a way around it, it'll be, it'll be a work in progress, I think, for some time. Once it's in place, like most anything else, oh darn, that was an unintended consequence, or. We didn't foresee that there's a loophole there, or there's inconsistency in in these two places. If we get to that point, I think we just do the best we can and then deal with that, clean it up after.
Okay.
So our. Unless somebody else has has specifics on the proposed ordinance, our overall objective, I think, tonight is figure out what. What is our path forward? And I. It's it's not an action item tonight, so we're not going to take a vote, I don't want to circumvent the rules by taking a straw vote. But we do need to have some some discussion. It it would be appropriate that we had a motion at some point that. We want to forward this or that. For a public hearing at a future meeting, and it might not be our next meeting, it depends on how simple or complicated. Our path is going to be and and kind of going back to what Commissioner Berry said. A while ago. We're kind of at the fork in the road. At a minimum, we need to define short term rentals, so it's clear to everybody and. Step two of that is, all right, now now that we define them, are we going to recognize them as being? A legitimate business with all of these conditions? Or are we going to recognize them as not in the best interest of most of Dexter Township? And we have just define it and clearly prohibit them. So what's the? And I ask that mainly because I think this next step depends on some sense of that. If we think we're going down path A, we can have a public hearing and our next meeting staff will have the. The proper wording, I think we pretty much got it in here, we just kind of pull that part of it out. If it's. Path B. We might want to, because, you know, most of us got this relatively recently, and there was a holiday weekend and whatever, whatever. We might want to come back at the next meeting with. All of our detailed questions and then formulate from that. The refinements to the proposed ordinance that staff can do and we'd be. I suppose ready for public hearing in July. And having even said that, we know that there are certain times of year that aren't really great for things because. Some of us might be gone, but but more importantly. Uh, we may have residents that are on vacation in. July and unable to fully participate, so you know, that may even be a consideration. So what's the group want to do?
Mister Chair, just um. So everyone's on the same page, the June meetings, the twenty fourth, the July meetings, the twenty second, the August meetings, twenty sixth, so. Just jot that down in your notes or in your head when considering when you think a public hearing would be appropriate.
Twenty fourth, twenty second and twenty sixth.
Correct.
Yep, got it, thank you.
Mister Chair, regarding the the first. Option that you mentioned. Looking at the short term rental committee report recommendation. Page two or seventeen of ninety four, short term rentals definition and histories. The opening sentence in that paragraph states, a short term rental STR. Unit is typically defined as rental of a dwelling unit in whole or in part. For a period of less than thirty days and more than fourteen days per calendar year. I think I would find that definition quite satisfactory, but I'm passing it out by the commissions. If if we. Find that, that's satisfactory, we could adopt that as the definition.
But I I would like Fletcher to do some research on that fourteen days, because that fourteen days is important, I feel like you can legally. Rent out your dwelling for up to fourteen days per year. And not be considered a short term dwelling unit, and that could be important to.
Yeah, yeah, it sure could be. And thank you.
But otherwise, I I I agree.
It's. It's interesting that that's not the exact same wording that is picked up in the. Model or or draft ordinance, page seventy two of ninety four. Modify section two point zero two to define short term rentals, short term rental. Commercial activity insisting of renting a dwelling or unit for a term of not more than thirty nights. Law for rental following shall not be considered, those are the exceptions, campgrounds and. Bed and breakfast and nursing homes, whatever.
Sure, Mister Chair. One of the big considerations of the STR committee during their discussions over the six meetings. Was focusing on short term rentals that are one night stays, the committee had this thought that. The people who stay for one night may not, you know, act respectfully as people who stay three or more nights. So I think the committee landed on the number three, three night stay as the minimum, and then thirty being the absolute maximum. But the fear from residents as well as the committee is that people who may stay for one night might be the ones who throw the the party that gets out of hand. Rather than the people who have to stay the whole weekend.
And I think the three, although I can't find it right now, I think the three is in the draft. Ordinance someplace, isn't it, where? Where the minimum minimum stay would be established at. Three days. Yeah, I can't find that now, maybe I'm maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's not in the draft. Maybe it was in the report.
Uh, section five. Item J D seven of ninety four, rental period.
Three days, no more.
There it is, all right, thanks.
Which makes me wonder, since the fourteen and the thirty are both mentioned in other sections as part of the definition. Maybe we should include that three as part of our definition also.
So I think the definition of short term rental is anything up to thirty days, but the proposed. Restriction or condition on that is that the minimum has to be three for the reasons stated. So it wouldn't be part of the definition, but it would be.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the ease of reading it, the fact that two of the three numbers occur in the definition, but the third one doesn't.
Get your point, you know.
But whichever is the appropriate way to do it.
We, of course, do not entertain. Comments, but it's a it's a very orderly group, so I'll break protocol.
Whether it's one day, two days, three days, if you're involving a rental agent. Outside person who engages in that type of activity. As opposed to something that's amazing. You can use my place for a weekend.
Yeah, that's that's interesting and it's part of the. Thing that I'm kind of wrestling with to define, I I think. Like the like the who's owning it, who's renting it is a big deal, and I think we don't have much. Influence over that, rules will apply to anybody, whether you live in other. You live across the country. Tax issue? Oh, for property tax, for homestead or what? Okay, all right, thank you.
But I'd still like you to look look into that, Fletcher.
Absolutely, I'll look into that, and then I did want to comment on one thing Commissioner Smith had said earlier. Regarding license availability. I think the planning commission should maybe consider making the transfer or the license itself. Not run with the land, so essentially if the home sells, the new owner would have to go through the process again. Thus, stopping that market from potentially occurring, you know, raising the prices. Of the home significantly because there's marketability based on. A short term rental being permitted at that address.
Right, because if we if we offer a limited number of short term rental permits. We would have, we could potentially end up with a a waiting list. And so if the house sold, that permit should not extend to the new owner, that permit should go back in. And then have the option of the next person who's on the waiting list for a permit to. Be able to get that.
Correct. And I do see that that is language that's in the post.
I think it would not be a bad idea for this commission to take the time. To go over the proposed ordinance over the net before the next planning commission meeting and. Have all our notes ready and and have, you know, spend some serious time with discussion and consideration. That I feel like agreed that we got this right before the holiday weekend, but I. I still, I think that this is too big of an issue for us to rush. I think that we do need to. We need to give it the consideration that the topic deserves.
So your proposal would be that, yeah, we we take this, we take the comments, any comments that we get in the interim. And get into the deep discussion in our June meeting.
Yes.
And then figure out what we're going to go forward with. Anybody have any objection to that?
Possibly targeting a public hearing the July meeting, but not before.
Yes.
I was gonna, yeah, and I'm not saying that we would move this forward, we we could have. A good deep discussion in June and then say. We don't want this in Dexter Township, at which point I don't know that that requires a public. Hearing to decide, I'm not exactly.
Well, I guess at that point it would be a zoning ordinance amendment either way, we're going to sign it and then and then outlaw, so there would be.
Yeah, people would be notified regardless of what direction the commission went.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, before the commission makes any. Motions tonight, Johnny knows with Carlisle Warman, I would like to say a few words based on tonight's conversation, if you would entertain them.
Sure, thank you, thank you, my first comment is is it always this?
Sure, thank you, thank you. My first comment is, is it always this hot in here?
No. That's a little stuffy in here.
Yes, it is, sure. It is. Yeah, I'm, Megan is enjoying some, I hope Sam Adams and crab cakes in Boston, so I've kind of covered for, but I appreciate the time. I work closely with Brady. I represent a lot of different communities in Washington, Livingston County, live, family has a lake, I'll sell a lake out in Sugarloaf, out in the township. So I've been actively involved in this and helped on a lot of communities and you guys are, it was a great discussion tonight. And it was, it was, it's a, this is a really hard thing to, to decide on. A few years ago in Manchester Township, they came to an agreement that, that short-term rentals were already permitted, but they were considered hotels, similar to hotels in the commercial districts. So that's, that's what they came to. But another community like Orion Township, which I work in, where you drive into Orion Township where it says, living as a vacation, they've been working on this ordinance language for months and months and months, and they've been wrestling with a lot of things that you've talked about, whether it's percentages in zoning districts, linear distances from other short-term rentals, those are, those are all ways to, to, to look to limit that. The big question is, as Chairman Stroud said, is, does the board, who is ultimately the, the general law ordinance creator, which, and you know this a bet, is that general laws go backward and forward and zoning is linear. Once you create your zoning ordinance amendment, it only goes forward this way. So you had some good discussion on the idea of how we're going to enforce this. And Director, Director indicated, yeah, we do have some language in there that we would, we would enforce those existing short-term rents. And so those kinds of things, you're gonna, you should continue to think about, perhaps even a conversation with the board. And I don't know if there's a board rep here. I, the board is, is looking for you, direction from you, but ultimately they're gonna make the decision on this, so they may want to have a conversation as well, because if the board, who's ultimately the legislative body who decides on this, doesn't feel like, or we already have language in our ordinance and we're not being exclusionary and we do consider these as commercial, then it's really a moot point, all of these different factors that are in that ordinance. So it's, it's something that maybe the board would have a conversation on. And I think that exclusionary issue is, is an important one, because what we've seen recently is this just gigantic growth in solar energy and I don't know if Dexter Township ever had a proposal, but they got turned down by so many different communities that the, the state in its infinite wisdom decided to take over that process of solar. Now, I'm not saying that's gonna happen with short-term rentals, but it's certainly a possibility.
That, that has been in front of the state legislature or some committee or something for a while, hasn't it? The short-term rental?
I think, was it February twenty, twenty twenty-four?
The house bill, fifty-three, thirty-eight, yeah.
Right, it has been, and so it's just kind of
Latest attempt?
Just kind of laying out there, but it's not something that's important to think about that if the state takes control of it, if we have an ordinance in place, we'll be, we will be protected. So it's just all these balls in the air, guys, that, you know, we, we drafted this language for you, which is similar to many communities. And I would say, as the director indicated earlier, that you may even want to run that, that draft by the attorney, township attorney, to see what things can be pulled out of there or shouldn't even be in there before you kind of dig into that. So I don't envy your, I don't envy your job. You've got a great, you know, you've got Brady and Megan's brilliant, so she'll help you along through this. But first and foremost, as you said, is, do we want it or don't we want it? Or do we have enough now? One community I'm looking at, looks at it, kind of backing into it by, by because the biggest issue and the biggest concern is lakefront, what they've done is, is put acreage requirements on these type uses. And so they're allowed, but they're based on, on acreage. And we know lakefront communities are pretty tight and they're, they're dangerous for potential nuisances. So it was a good discussion tonight. I mean, you've got a draft and you got some more homework ahead of you, but I, I think maybe first and foremost is it, get some direction from the board as well, because that's a, they don't want to put it on the board, but, you know, ultimately they're gonna be making that decision.
Yeah, thank you. And, and there'll be another board meeting before there's another planning commission meeting, so there, there may be an opportunity. And, and something that trustee Abbott was touching upon a moment ago. Yeah, I've also thought about, so, so if planning commission makes a mistake, what's the consequence of that mistake? You know, kind of like you can't un-ring a bell. If we go full blast forward with this and somebody comes in and grabs up the three percent or whatever the cap is gonna be for the permits, that won't get undone in my lifetime, I'm sure. So I think it's in the township's best interest that if we're going to screw up, that we screw up on the side of dragging our feet, not, not permitting something that, I think was it somebody's comment, talked about opening up the, the can of worms? Yeah, I guess, I guess that can has been opened. We can't, if we open it more, we'll never get those worms back in there. And I was just
Well, that can opened, it can opened last summer. That's the thing. If people don't understand, we didn't open this can of worms. It was opened for us by someone who complained.
That's a great point.
They had the right to do so.
Yep. Yep, and it, it kind of exposed the, the open secret in Dexter Township that, yeah, we've got, we've got a lot of these going on, but so far they haven't really been a problem.
I, I just wanted to say one more thing, guys, is, is that, and you brought it up a few times today, and, and I know you know, then the board knows it, is that you can write the best ordinance language in the world, but if you don't, if you don't have the enforcement ability, then it's really not, it's really not worth anything. And I've acted as a planning director in a few communities and tried to do both the job that Fletcher's doing and be a zoning enforcement officer, and they're constant colliding with each other because you're putting out fires all day long as you're finding, right? And, and to find time to address those kinds. So I guess what I would say if uh, uh, like Linden Township where I'm at, you have to have a zoning enforcement officer in some form to kind of get out there, not, and not be, not drive around and look for problems in Dexter Township, but be responsive to complaints and to follow those complaints through a civil infraction process or however you want to handle.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a hard, it's a hard, without, without enforcement, you guys take all this time and write this and without enforcement, whether it's for this or whatever, it doesn't go any.
And the S T R committee, as you'll see in the report, they really emphasize that. They said if township can enforce this, might as well prohibit it because it's, it's gonna be, some, it's gonna be a jab for somebody to do, to follow up on all of these.
Great point. Uh, kind of a, a technical question, I guess. Is S T R committee still intact? Have they discharged their responsibility and they've disbanded or?
But once we moved the issue to the planning commission, we are we are not, we are dissolved.
So the technical part of this question is, how do your minutes, or maybe it's a question for Janice, somebody knows, how, how do your final minutes get approved and become part of the public record?
We are not sure. We were just talking about that. So I will have our final minutes here at the next meeting. And I do not know how we get those approved.
And I'm, I'm not so concerned, I guess, about them being approved. It's just that sometimes a body gets in a jam if the unapproved minutes are released and then there's a necessary correction. But I think we would all find it kind of interesting, any of us who may have followed even lately, you know, not in real time, just kind of go back and see what your deliberations and discussions have been. I think you get those last set of minutes might be educational for us.
Um, I did want to make one comment here, when you were talking about enforcement and one thing Dexter Township needs to think about, whether short-term rentals goes forward or not. We hear, we heard a lot of public comments about Dexter Township not having any enforcement for A and B and Z and Q. So at some point, if, if that is such an issue with people, that enforcement is non-existent here, then we should have an enforcement officer, whether, whether short-term rentals goes through or not, because there's clearly some angst in this community over the lack of enforcement. So that's just, I wanted to just make that for the public record.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Mister Chair, could I ask Commissioner Abbott, as your liaison for for the, for the board, would you take their temperature on adding staff?
Well, I would be happy to.
Yeah.
I'm, yes, I'll, I will do that.
I'll layer on to that comment. One thing that I would like us to explore a little bit is to make sure we're not missing an opportunity. The master plan talks about agribusiness or agritourism, I think it is. And because that is tied to these venues and, okay, so you have a wedding, but maybe some people should be able to spend the night. And because that is one of the, you know, agriculture districts, that maybe there is something we should be exploring at the same time. So let's just make sure we're thinking about those opportunities as we do our homework. And then also frankly, that's tax income, you know, the more we can do and, and, and grow, you know, maybe that helps with staffing.
Yeah, I, I always thought with the master plan to encourage tourism to Dexter Township, but not allow anyone to stay, kind of smacks.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I feel like it's saying, come here, spend your money, see all we have, but then get out. And I, and I just think that we should be thinking, that, that's something. I'm glad you made that distinction.
If if we have nothing else, I don't think we need a, a motion, if we have consensus to go back, study, come up with our questions and be ready for it could be a vigorous, if not in-depth conversation in, in June in our regular meeting. And Fletcher, you'd set that up as an agenda item, please.
Sure.
In that case, if there's no objection, let's move to item nine, approval of the planning commission minutes of the April twenty-second. Actually, the agenda says twenty-four, but we know twenty-five. I didn't catch that till now. Anybody, anybody have anything? And while you're thinking about it, I'll start with Janice. I have just a, a teeny tiny one at the very end, adjournment, all yeses. Now, I think I've talked about yeses before. And I may have been exactly the opposite of what I'm gonna say now, but I think, I think, and although I don't like trying to spell out yeses in the plural, I think the dictionary spells it Y E S E S, not Y E S S E S. But I kind of remember complaining about that a while ago, that that doesn't look right, Y E S E S, and I looked it up. So anyhow, if you just figure out what the, I think, I think it's just a single S, not double S in the middle, and just make the correction, correction accordingly, if that is correct, please. Anybody else have anything? Seeing none, could we have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Well, so.
Move by Heard?
Second.
Uh, support by Smith? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 All those both know? All yeses? With, with two total, yeah, not two in the middle. Uh, correspondence. Fletcher, you care to introduce any of this to us? We, we received
Yes.
Some communication through email, and then we got yep, some more when we got here tonight.
Yes, yep. The planning commission chair shared with me three emails sent directly to him and then forwarded my way for my attention, and I had shared that all with the board. We received an email from Scarlett Bennett, nine six seven zero Winston Road, Asu Kazuski, nine six nine zero Winston Road, and a Brent in Dottie Williams at one three seven three six Edgewater Drive. Uh, we also received additional information from Linda Selbert. She was the co-chair for the S T R committee. Uh, she was just expanding upon the conclusion and information presented in the S T R memo. Uh, and she included a zoning text amendment ordinance from Spring Lake Township in the county of Ottawa prohibiting short-term rentals or removing it entirely from being a permitted use. I also gave the commissioners two maps to consider during their studying. One is a map of the Portage Base Lake Sewer and Water Authority Assessment District, and the other is the Multi-Lake Water and Sewer, Sewer Authority Service Area Map. Just wanted the commissioners to see where in the township people are being serviced with sewer systems, because septic capacity was a big concern of the S T R committee. There was also some concerns about sewer capacity as well with these authorities. And then lastly, I believe Commissioner Smith brought this up, Christina Mayer couldn't be here today, but she left her notes and comments for the commissioners to look at.
I don't want to open up, well, maybe I do, because I'm about to say it anyhow, open up a can of worms, but a little history on, on the capacity issue. So Multi-Lake Water and Sewer Authority, any any of these, either of these capacity issues, I, I think are, are a real big deal. And maybe beyond capacity is what's the, what's the lifetime of that installation, should something get screwed up? And going way back, Jim Durolet in the audience paid most of his political capital back in, heck, was that early nineties, whenever it was? And, and I was on the board of commissioners at the time. That was the only solution. I was also on the Board of Health for a lot of years. That was the only solution for most of the lakes' properties. Health Department was requiring seasonal use deed restrictions because many of the homes around the lakes evolved from cottages. And if they had any sort of quote-unquote septic system at all, it might have been a fifty-five gallon drum with, you know, a line going out to like a dry well or something, you know, totally unsatisfactory and, and lake quality was being degraded and, and property values were also in the dumpster because of, of seasonal use restrictions and people not being able to even, even transfer their property. So I tend to be quite protective of the one solution that was available, you know, that one piece of property available at that one time and everything that came together to make that happen. So I don't, I don't think we should in any way do anything that, that jeopardizes what we have, because the alternative, should that thing go to heck on us, is, is gonna be very, very, very expensive. Having said all that, when, when what now has become Hilltop Acres was before the planning commission, uh, which would go back, what, about five, six years ago now, the, the new board had just taken office. There was a decision made by the new board to allow them to tap into the multi-lakes sewer. And that took the development, I think the numbers were, took it from forty-four, if they all had onsite septic systems to forty-eight, and those forty-eight, which according to me would have been forty-four and would have been self-sufficient with, with their own septic. There was a conscious decision to have them tap in and, and I don't fully buy into the, it's better for the environment because most septic systems onsite sewage disposal. it's better for the environment because most septic systems onsite sewage disposal systems are going to operate okay for years and years and years if they have both proper soils to begin with and an expansion area available, and you could alternate back and forth over those over a period of years if you had to. The main incentive at the time, I think, was the new board was being told that Sewer Authority needed to get more taps because they had budget problems. So just a little history, according to me, others may remember it differently, but we uh we need to be really, really protective of of both of those systems. Anyhow, off of my soapbox, good history, bad history, whatever. Township Board of Trustees update, trustee Abbott?
We had a really good meeting last Tuesday. Um, the the board voted to uh have healthcare for uh full-time and part-time employees and and elected officials, but I don't think trustees are part of that. Um, we did pass the legally non-conforming ordinance change. Uh, however, um, the keeping of animals was a fun conversation. Um, it did go through, however, the maximum density column for under ten acres was removed. And so it did pass, but with the removal of that.
Yeah, then that was, uh, yeah, just to help clarify that those who may be unfamiliar, I don't remember now what the number was, but a horse, for example, it might have been two and a half acres to have the first horse and an acre for every subsequent horse or whatever, but it was capped at six horses. I'm in the ballpark, if not exactly right. And and this would apply to under ten acres because ten acres and above, even if you're in RR goes to GAMS, the general and accepted agricultural management practices, but it's that cap that was removed. So now whatever that calculates out to two and a half acres to have any horses and then one per after that, um that's the part that and I think we had discussed that in some form or another. I I totally got the point that that the township board was raising is that there seems to be an inconsistency. I'm not sure that the inconsistency was unintentional. But anyhow, uh, they they made that change and I think it's entirely workable.
The nice thing is is that, you know, I mean, if then we don't have to worry about grandfathering in a certain number of cows, a certain number of horses, because when you're um mentioning that in the beginning of the meeting, I was, how do you gra- how do you know? How long a person had? You know, they they're only allowed to have five cows, but they actually, well, we actually had seven when this was, so we should be grandfathering.
Well, and I had twenty-five chickens. They weren't the same chickens because, you know, they
Right.
they died off years ago, but but yeah, how many chickens do I get now on my nine acres?
Right.
Whatever.
That's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, concerns of planning commission members, Director of Planning and Zoning, Township Supervisor and Recording Secretary. Uh, typically, we start with Megan. So Brady, you have anything for us?
Uh, no, that's not.
Quit while you're ahead is is a good uh Fletcher, anything else?
Um, I realized that the uh, when I set the thermostat to seventy degrees, uh, it was on heat. And that's uh AC, so that was the reason why I was so balmy in here.
So your intentions were right, but uh, thank you. We could probably close that now because it does feel like, unless that's blowing in, it does feel like AC is blowing cool now.
I believe it's working now, um, but I will make a revision to the agenda to say twenty twenty-five on the the approval of the meeting minutes, reflect the current year we're in, and then I'll also uh investigate all the questions the commissioners had this evening uh for the upcoming year.
Yeah, thank you very much. Trustee Abbott as planning commission member, anything else? Uh, Commissioner Barry?
None.
Commissioner Heard?
I have none.
Sorry, I was looking through my notes to see if there was something else. Uh, Commissioner Birch?
Yes, of course. A question or a request of uh Director Recker. Uh, the director of Multi-Lakes Water and Sewer Authority had a letter in our package in which she said, quote, "I will be listing this on the May fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-five Multi-Lakes Water and Sewer Authority Board Meeting for further discussion with my board, but but wanted to give you my initial thoughts." I would ask Director Reiner to solicit from uh the director of Multi-Lakes Water and Sewer, any comments that they may have had relevant to our short-term zoning. And that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Nothing.
Ms. Miller, anything for us? That brings us to public comment. Anybody uh here to address us at the end of the meeting here, please step right up and same thing, state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Brenda Donaldson, one three seven three zero, which Emily wrote. So my question tonight is, since this moratorium is being allowed, what is the legal liability to the township for allowing an illegal operation? Um, it's and without adherence to any of the building codes or to any of the ordinances? So if we have a short-term rental owner who's operating and does not have egress windows that that, you know, are fitted to code, and they have a fire and someone is killed or is maimed and injured for life, who's going to pay for that? Because now it's known, because at the one, several of our meetings, we did have an owner said that he knows his egress windows are not, or what he considers egress windows do not fit code. So we all know this, because I was on the subcommittee. So what are we going to do if something happens to one of his renters? And this is known in public and it's been documented. And he has a fire and someone becomes injured or dies. So what I'm saying is, I don't know how we can run a moratorium without any regulations, registration, or acknowledgement of what's going on and take this responsibility. And do we want this responsibility for three years if you did do a moratorium for three years? Um, what happens if they have a hot tub? And there's faulty wiring because they wired it themselves. No one's inspected. So there, I mean, the list could go on and on and on. And and Airbnb only provides a million dollars of coverage. But there's also riders that you have to use as a short-term rental in order to cover all of your liability. And a lot of these short-term rental owners are not aware that this million dollars is going to not cover every incident that occurs. The short-term rental um owners that have docks, they are required to have life jackets at their dock because an insurance company can say there was a grounding at the dock. Well, do you have your life jackets there? So if they don't adhere to these these regulations that these insurance companies offer them, they're going to null and void that. And then my other question is, if if the short-term rental owner is renting through Airbnb or VRBO or any of these corporates, and they had a liability issue occur in incident, is the short-term rent, I mean, is the Airbnb, these corporate companies, are they going to be able to turn around with their insurance companies and say, you were operating illegally within a township? And does our insurance company have to cover this? Because you're operating your business and we didn't realize that you're in doing this illegally. So I think there's a lot of liability issues that need to be checked out too with this.
Thank you.
Joseph Spiegel, seventy-three oh nine sour. Um, is it possible to submit through Fletcher additional materials?
Yes.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, Jim Drolet again. Uh, I know John mentioned exclusionary zoning. Uh, you know, I think the the township can protect themselves against a lot of lawsuits if it follows its master plan. And we have a good master plan tonight, and I would encourage this body and the township board to do that. Uh, there are a lot of ways that these things can be abated or even reduced. And one is through regulations. Especially lakes. A lot of these rental properties are on thirty-foot, forty-foot wide lots that are legally non-conforming lots. You can't expand the use on a legally non-conforming lot. So all they have to do is look at the lot and look at what's going on in it. And if they expanded the use past residential, single-family residential, which defines in our, is defined in our ordinance, I think you could probably do some of that. Years ago, we did a, what we'd call a originally a keyhole ordinance, and now call it a common use ordinance. And we said if you wanted to develop a backlot, there were certain things you had to have. Minimum lot size for the for the primary, for the waterfront lot. I think it was a hundred and fifty feet plus fifty foot more for every uh additional house that was going to be built in the development. Well, it didn't take too much to figure out that not many people could, you know, own two hundred acres to put twenty houses in it. So it did, it never happened, which was the intent of the ordinance to prevent congestion, overcrowding of the lakes. I think that if 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 the board, the township board's going to have to get involved in this because it's it's about spending money. Now, I would suggest that maybe you folks, now that you have this report from this committee, ought to have a meeting with the township board and see which direction they want to go before you spend a whole lot more time on drafting an ordinance and a whole lot more money. Because if they say, hey, we're not going to hire an enforcement officer, we don't want to do this, we don't want to have a rental ordinance, which is one of the solutions that you can do. Have total inspections of the property, township, health department, uh, the building department, the fire department. Everything has to be up to current codes in order to allow it to be used as a rental. You're probably going to get rid of four-fifths of these outfits because a lot of these rental properties are right along Dexter Pinkney Road. And they all have the same problem, no parking, little cottages, and nobody wants to put money in because it's not going, they're not going to get their money back. So they just buy them and use them as a rental. So I think if you, if the township wants to go that way, they ought to look at some kind of rental ordinance for every, all property, not just for those, but you can make it specifically things for each subdivision. If you have somebody in a in a new subdivision, we know they comply with the ordinance, we know they comply with the building codes because they were just built. But there are additional things like, you know, smoke detectors in every bedroom, those types of things that these folks ought to have. And if you've been in somebody, especially the one that the gal wanted to have, it's just one big room. That's all it is. And there's no parking on the property. You have to park in a road which is a two-track. So I think all of all that will help do this. And I think if you stick to the master plan and and you want, if you, if the township board wants to go along with doing something like this, your folks ought to talk about having it. Or the rental ordinance, the fees from rental ordinances where you do an inspection every year, every two years or whatever, anytime the thing changes, that can go to the township conference to help offset the cost of this operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Linda Selbert, and I was co-chair of the S T R committee. So I'm not going to repeat a lot of the things that you've all said that I'm back there nodding my head. You're asking really good questions. This is so complicated. Most articles I read, most stories you hear, it doesn't work well in residential neighborhoods. So a couple comments. Um, it was brought up many times that the township just got one complaint. One complaint that they heard, one resident that felt like they were upset enough to come forward. I can tell you, this weekend I talked to six different residents that said, I had lots of complaints. I was afraid of the repercussions of my complaint. I also had no faith in the township enforcing because I've had other problems that they have not taken care of me. So I I really caution you not to believe that you only heard one complaint. I can gather a group of people and have a coffee hour. They will break your heart. Careful, because one story was really powerful. It was a widowed woman who all of a sudden had multiple people coming in and out next door to her. She had no idea who they were. They were loud, they were, she feared for her safety. She went from having a neighbor to having a small hotel operating next door to her. She didn't go outside the whole summer. Think of her. All right. She really impacted me, truly did. I don't know. The three-night minimum. You know, I initially thought, okay, that's okay. I operated a short-term rental out of state in a um a very popular vacation destination, Maui. I operated it in a hotel zone. And I thought, you know, as an owner, I didn't allow any rentals under three days anyways, because my turnaround cost would be ridiculously prohibitive. But after I talked to this poor lady, I was thinking, okay, so every three nights she could have potentially ten strangers checking in and out of this house next to her at any hour of the day or night. She will never know her neighbors. She thinks she needs to move.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, public comment will be closed. Next agenda item, future agenda items. I think we've got that unless anybody else has anything to toss in there, we should have a pretty full June meeting. Next item of business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Or or not, I mean, support. I've got no place else to go tonight. So it's moved by Barry, support by Birch. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carried, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and thank you for everybody who came.